I hope.
Miss the old hourglass.
And then I think she said to X this out.
Really? So you guys. So much like your guys.
No, it's Calder's.
I'm gonna say you want me, have you got it? Cool.
Alright, welcome.
Joining us uh August twenty first, there's only more of appeals meeting, I ask everybody that can stand.
What do you need to do to apply? United States of America. Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible. The religion and justice of all.
Roll ball real quick.
Uh Chair Hovgen.
Here.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Here.
Member Davis.
Yeah.
Members Zerowski.
Here.
Members Seadance.
Here.
Alright, well this month we've got two applications in the docket um. First one's gonna be Henry Muller, Mr. Muller, you wanna come on up? Have seat one seats there. This looks like it's a R two so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um it's for an area variance uh section block lot to seventy seven point three dash two dash twenty six. He's seeking an area variance for garage proposed garage, then doesn't meet the setbacks, current setback is twenty three feet, then it's supposed to be forty, so. He's looking for a seventeen foot variance. Um. What can you tell us about your project to get us started, Mr. Muller?
The garage was uh in front of the house, the garage was about hundred forty feet from Stony Kill Road, but let me describe my property. Uh I. I have a front that took one hundred feet. On Stony Kill Road. And then goes back. To Sonus Hill Creek about nine hundred feet, which equals about two acres. If. If um the garage that was done, it was about fifty years old, it was uh in bad condition and I took it down. Um. If I. Had to follow the variance, if I don't get a variance, if if I could follow the new regulation of forty feet. My proposed garage would be in the middle of the driveway. And it would know, I wouldn't be able to get around the house anymore with um delivery trucks, let's say fuel oil. So what I'm asking for is a variance, so let me put the new garage, which is bigger. But put it in the same area. And the same distance from where it is now from the neighbor's property. Although it's bigger, I I couldn't, I didn't qualify for putting it into as a grandfathered in, like putting it into the same footprint. Cause the new garage is twenty four by twenty four, the old garage was twenty two by twenty, so there's a few feet difference. I have some pictures if you'd like to look at them, maybe it's it would explain things a little bit. And I have a diagram now. The last. Uh diagram I submitted is I was gonna put the garage further down. Because drainage problems and it's fur- further down towards Stony Kill Road. The contractor said, don't worry about that, we're gonna put in uh drains, so you don't get water into the garage, which was one of the problems with the old garage. It constantly when it rains, water would infiltrate on the floor. So I just wanna put it back now in the same place, so I'm I changed that drawing and I don't think you have that.
What we have is we have the proposed garage in front of the old garage, we have that.
Um.
Drawing.
I have a new.
Okay.
New plan.
Yeah, we'd like to see that.
It's it's marked off in red.
To keeping.
And I want to keep the same, yes.
Keeping the corner in the same spot.
Yeah, and I wanna keep the distance from. The neighbor the same.
Is it? That garage that you're supposed to?
Exactly, that's that's down. Now, if you if just if you look at that picture, i- if I went forty feet from the neighbor. And the new garage is twenty four by twenty four, we right smack in the middle of the driveway. And trucks couldn't get around it, I I would have to. Essentially build a new driveway, so the trucks can drive up to the house to put deliver fuel oil.
Has you considered going with the same footprint of the old building and just uh it looks like it was twenty two by twenty?
Twenty two by twenty um. No. I wanted more space, I wanted twenty four by twenty four. I actually ordered this garage from place called Brad's Barnes. And. I I couldn't get the plans to submit to you. The building plans or the architect's plans until I put a deposit on the garage. So I they took fourteen thousand dollars as a deposit. If I don't build, if I want my money back. They have a twenty percent restocking fee and a charge of course for the architect's plans. So I did not wanna go the same size that was theirs, I know it probably would have been easier, but since I was build, since I'm building um. I wanted to make it bigger and have more room.
But just to be clear, the new building. Will not be any closer. To the line and issue than the existing than the old garage.
Correct.
So 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 the period of concern. Actually isn't changing at all from what had existed when you had the prior garage.
That's correct, the only thing I was told that it wouldn't. It wouldn't be in the same footprint, meaning the same size. But I wanna keep the same distances, no problem there.
Right, so there's the, there would be no additional encroachment on the neighbor than there was before you took the garage.
Correct.
And in fact, you've actually probably improved the property by taking that garage down, which as I understand is. Probably closer to the road than most of. You've actually improved the property if you do this.
I've. Yeah, I guess so, but it's not closer to the road, it's.
It's not closer to the road, I'm just saying that it's. In terms of the neighborhood and the visual appearance in the neighborhood. It's it's if it's if it's visible at all, it will be an improvement.
Okay, I understand, I I agree um I I. I wanna put it in the same place. Uh but they did. The neighbors, the the amount of space from the neighbor will remain the same, I'll be right on that same. Slab.
Yep. Did every did everyone else see just the amended and location?
That was gonna be my first question, why not just put it in the same place and have it a little bigger and but that's the change here.
Yeah, there was a reason I thought of that to do that, to to put it further down originally.
Yeah.
Because it slopes and and um. Water will always infiltrate even between the the uh. The slab and and the uh. The wood.
Yeah.
In fact, when I took it down. The whole building spun, there was nothing holding it to the foundation anymore.
Thanks, that always makes me feel good.
Uh the other question I had is I I heard you say in response to. Clayton's question that you didn't consider doing the same size, can you just explain a little bit more about? Why you want it bigger, like what that? Why that necessary for you?
Uh yeah, two two things, I thought since I'm building. I can always use more room. Um. And it was only by. Uh. Two feet in one direction, four feet in the other direction, plus the um. The place I ordered the barn for, the Brad's Barnes, they ordered the building from.
Mm-hmm.
There is, they don't build a twenty by twenty.
I see.
Structure, I'm sure I could have gotten a contract if I had a real one, but I wanted that size, I wanted more space.
There any other cosmetic changes that you make into the new building versus what you already have existing? You know, it's color, height. Something like that.
Uh the height is it's it's gonna be a one story building um. I'm I I'm having it. The same roof, which I have a metal roof on a house. It'll have a metal roof on a garage and a siding will be the same also. The same color vinyl siding. Anybody wanna see that?
Uh we can have a copy of that, if you can provide that Stacy for the fuck.
Is this the same as what you submitted?
Or is that is that something?
No, I that wasn't submitted, that's uh.
I see your like contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you if you look over here, well. This is their clause where.
You can certainly submit it to us, yeah, it doesn't hurt for us to have a copy of it.
Okay, the more information we can have of you, the better it is for the file. It helps avoid any questions.
We are not allowed to consider financial.
Oh.
Okay.
So if that's the only thing that's true, but it just has all the specs, so it's not bad for us to have it. Are you still gonna have?
You 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 have the building, the architect's plan.
We have this uh this year.
Right, okay.
You're still gonna have the one garage door in the front and a man door.
That's gonna be two garage doors. I had a choice of one large door, which. Really wouldn't make much sense, but no, it would be two doors.
My questions, just ship, we can think of them. Concerns. If you come up with any other information, Mr. Muller, we'd appreciate it.
Can you leave those, do we have access to scan right now, or we need to have him leave stuff?
Um I'm.
Oh, he's got all these pictures.
I got pictures, yeah.
Well. Even if you take a picture with your phone and send it to us.
So let's let the door open and then I'll put theirs.
Well, we can, Mr. Muller, would you mind us holding those photos, we'll make copies of it, we could scan them into the system, play a file, and then we'll return the photos. So we can done scanning them.
That's it's fine.
Okay, so this pad here, that's after you took down the garage, that's where the.
Right, right, yeah, gotcha. And and some of the pictures will show you, I mean you can, but you could, you'll see that where the where the slab ends.
Mm-hmm.
To the neighbor's property, there's some shrubbery there, that it's. It's approximately twenty to twenty three uh feet. But whatever it is, I wanna stay within the.
Yeah, you're gonna keep that corner, that's the corner that's closest to the house and closest to the neighbor. And keep that one the same and the expansion will be towards the road and.
Expansion closer road and towards to the uh the rest of my property.
Right, we should get pictures, we should get all these things scanned, do you have a copy of this yourself, or can we just keep this one?
Uh you can keep this one, I have a this this on the back, you have?
Yeah, that we have.
Want that?
Let's take this. We'll just give it to the file there.
See, whatever is in red there that just shows.
Yeah.
The profile.
That's helpful.
Is there any change in utilities or sewer electric or anything like that that's gonna happen?
Um no.
Okay.
The the old building. Had an overhead um mass. Where the electric ran from the fall to the garage. Then it ran underground to the building. I had, there's no, there's no way of temporarily like. Pausing it, eh putting it down and then say, okay, I'll we'll put it up when a new building goes up. So all my electric is now underground, so there'll be no, nothing will be attached to the building.
Okay.
Anybody? Is is the garage like a standard kit from Brad's Barnes, in other words?
Yeah, 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 they uh they partially built it, they said they'll put it up in one day.
It's going on concrete footing? Pad?
It's going on a concrete pad, yes.
Do you have, you have a picture of the of the pair of the new one?
He just has like, it's the plans, there's the plans.
I'm I'm wondering, I'm on their website, I'm wondering whether that. You just picked up one of them. From. Does it look like?
That'll give you the model now. Should give you the model.
Called an A frame, typical A frame garage, one story.
Okay.
The next one goes standard twenty five four by twenty four two car garage.
Right. Now you still, from the pictures, it looks like you still have plenty of room if. It got into something that happened in your house or. Where's the security now they get past the garage toward your house, right?
Well, that that's what I wanna maintain, if. Since I only have a hundred foot frontage, if if I had to go back. Forty feet setback and another twenty four feet for the garage, I'd be smack in the middle of the property. And there's no more driveway, that's all grass on that side. But if I do get a variance. There will be room for a truck to get by or. Uh medical aid or whatever.
I have nothing further.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No.
Alright, well, I think we need. We're at a point where we can schedule a public hearing for everybody's comfortable with it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, we get a motion, schedule a public hearing for September eighteenth.
I'm in that.
I get a second.
Second.
Any discussion about that motion? All in favor?
I.
They opposed? Abstained. Somebody's putting down for a public hearing for the eighteenth. September, we have to send out notification to. All property owners five hundred feet.
Oh, motion seconded.
Uh Charlie motioned and Charlie seconded. Alright, Mr. Muller, what we're doing is we'll have you up for a public hearing at next month's meeting, alright um. Notification will be sent out to surrounding landowners within five hundred feet of your property, it's kinda described in this this packet that you received, if you received that email, if not. Hit up Stacy before you leave tonight and she gives you a copy of this so that you've got it.
Hey.
Uh maybe I should get a copy, but will the um. The meeting be next month?
It will, yes.
It just explained, this just explains the process, so we scheduled the public hearing.
Okay.
Coming a month, I have a public hearing and.
Is that, is there any problem with that date?
I I, is it the fourteenth?
No, it's the.
It'll be the eighteenth.
It'll be September eighteenth at the same time, six thirty right here.
If there's a problem on your end, let us know.
I I think there will be, I'll I'll have to check.
Alright, you don't actually have to be here.
Yeah.
Say you're not required to be here, it's entirely up to you. It's just a form.
I started the party here, but I think the eighteenth, I might have something.
Well, can I can I make a motion then that? Should be. Um the applicant. Notify us within twenty four hour of by the end of tomorrow, that be enough time for you?
Sure.
Right, should should. He requests that. The hearing be postponed until the following month that we schedule.
We we can, we can do that arbitrarily anyway, all we have to do is if he decides he doesn't wanna do it at the next meeting, we just postpone the public hearing.
Let's keep it.
And we can keep it open, yeah, but you know, or we can still send notification out with. The notification listing both potential deeds.
If I can't make it on the eighteenth. And you said I don't have to be here.
That's correct.
Do you have enough information? To.
It 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 looks like we do, it looks like we do, the only, the only, only way we would need more information is if somebody comes with a compelling reason. For needing more information, which. Typically doesn't happen, but you just never know.
Yeah.
And and we would have the option. To continue to open the hearing.
Correct.
For to continue the hearing until the following month, if for instance, something came up that we thought you you might have a reason to respond to.
See, I was originally told that. The the meeting would be on the fourteenth of September.
No, it should be, it's it's the third Thursday of every month.
And we apologize if you had.
If you were missing one of this.
That was just a mistake if.
Yeah, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be uh.
The fourteenth is Sunday. So he had.
No, that's not right, that, no, 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 I don't, I'm wrong, is if if your meeting is on the eighteenth, I believe I made that a.
Well, let us just step back to us tomorrow.
I think I can make that one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Saturday, Sunday, I don't make sense.
See, on the fourteenth of Sunday, so those flowers lose the eight.
Good, alright, and that's six o'clock?
Six thirty, six thirty, same time, yep.
Okay, um will you be able to return the pictures to me?
Absolutely, well, as soon as we get them scanned, we'll have them set aside, and if you want to um get ahold of Stacy tomorrow. By then she should have the pictures, and if you don't mind coming down to pick them up, that'd be great.
Good, I'll do that, okay, thanks very much, have a good evening. Go on.
There's the. For the violence of the lawyer, file. Sit in.
That's what I have on. Everything else I had I gave you for.
Okay. Um next on the agenda is uh Brett Freeze, come on up Brad. Um Atkins, the R five zone. Seeking area variance for proposed building of thirty by thirty two garage. With a thirty by fourteen lean to, does not meet the front yard setback for R five zoning district. The section block and lots five nine dot dash two dash twenty five dot one one zero. Thanks for coming, Freeze.
Thanks for having me.
Um can you give us any information in the file? You get everybody kinda up to speed on what your thoughts are.
So uh. I'm looking to have Pioneer Pole Buildings come, put up a. Pole barn, um originally, I I had a quote from them and from uh. Uh. What's the other one there uh? With uh. Mark Rosso, um and uh.
I didn't do landcaster.
Landcaster, yes, and so uh of. Marcus, when it brought to my attention, it must be a setback problem, I said, oh, I didn't think about that, and uh so he looked, he says, oh, about ten feet, you're good. So. Um. Uh. I didn't go with landcaster, I left uh right plan on going with the. Pioneer, um and then so I came down to get my permit and I was told it was fifty feet. And so it's a shock to me, um so I tried to see, can I put it somewhere else, there's not really anywhere. Um. Suitable to put it. Um and uh. Well. That's where we are, look looking to put up a a thirty by thirty two uh. Pole barn. Pioneer, um thirty thirty three feet. From, you know, I have a setback of thirty three where I need fifty. Um. The the line is a little weird, it's if you look at the map, it's like you've got the R two and the R five, and you get to my property. And then it juts and makes me. R five. And and the neighbor um R five, we're both small acreage. If, you know, we gotta do fifty feet, it doesn't give us a lot of, you know, the other, the R two is thirty two feet. Um I could shift the building and get my thirty two feet. But I can't get to fifty. Um oh thirty five rather. Um. So that that's where I'm at. Um. I can't hold hold barn until. I get my approval, um. And uh. Well, they haven't enough already, but I didn't realize the process, so I guess I should have done my own.
Well.
Yeah, try this for your homework.
There's another issue too, there there was two reasons for the variance, the first one is the setback. The second is the size of the building relative to the size of the primary structure, okay, so that. That what that says, and that's the thing they cited, it's like one forty. Thirty thirteen. Bullet point D, which says that if you have an accessory structure, which is the garage or the pole barn garage. Yeah. In front of. The primary structure, which in this case is the residence. Then the accessory structure can't be bigger in square footage and footprint than the primary structure. And I think just from the map, it doesn't say that the measurements of the primary residence, which is thirty by fifty. Okay, so it is smaller if you don't count the lean to, I guess. Uh but even with the lean to, you would be forty four by. Or forty six by thirty, so you will be smaller, we would just. Think we just.
Is that is that right on the CEO's determination?
Yeah, it's. Well, the third bullet point, they reference it.
Yes. It's.
Could it be, if we stated more clearly.
Yeah.
Let's say for the red, if we clarify that it doesn't need that variance. It's just information we would, I would like to see is just what the. The footprint of the primary residence is, just so that we can confirm.
Which that drawing is to scale.
Okay.
So if that up to it.
They're saying this is thirty by fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
If you include the deck, then it's gonna be more.
Yeah. You're saying that's thirty, that's fifty. Forty, that's fifteen hundreds for.
Forty six.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be thirty by forty six.
Thirty by forty six, yeah.
So are we within that?
I just check exactly what it says, it's like subsection thirteen. D. Accessory structure is not attached to a principal structure located closer to the street. Uh shall have a footprint no greater than the principal structure, except in the case, yeah, so you're okay. Yeah, it just can't be bigger. I guess they just couldn't tell. The other thing is, I know I'm always like babbling with. Code enforcement um determinations, but I don't think they're calculating the setback correctly.
They're calculating it from the center of Via Pioli Road.
Right, which is not right.
That's correct.
Well, I I did mine ten foot from the center, cause.
Oh, you started yours ten.
My 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 measurement there is from from the center, ten foot either way from the center of the road. And then. My uh.
Then you started your distance.
So you, so your forty three feet is actually fifty three to the center line?
Yeah, I believe so, I mean. Um. So I have forty three from the center, so I have thirty three.
Okay, so it's thirty three, okay.
Setback.
So you're see, you need seventeen feet then. To get for a variance to get to that fifty foot mark. So we're at, yeah.
But if you go anywhere. Not anywhere, if you go on Pioli Road, which is a dead end road, I'm almost to the end of it. Um uh there are almost every house on that road is right.
Yes, yeah, that's.
Including a fairly new. Similar pole barn.
Yeah.
That is way bigger than the house.
Yeah.
And uh um. It does not meet the setback.
Okay, so what it says is, uh so you you calculate the setback from the. Edge of the road, and then it says, the starting point of the front yard setback shall be measured, starting at the near edge of the road right away. Which shall be established depending on road jurisdiction as follows. So number two is parcels which have road frontage on a town of Rochester Road, right, this isn't a state or county road, so.
It's.
Um so the front yard setback shall be measured from a point established at twenty five feet from the center line of the paved road. Unless otherwise documented by the survey, so we have to count it, if it's forty three from the center. We have to do forty three minus twenty five, which is what, eighteen? Am I doing my math right?
Yes.
Yeah.
On the survey, does it list anything regards to?
On the survey, it it lists, it does, says this time, but it says uh. Assumed road bounds is all in that, um and that says sixteen uh five. I believe it was the the building department that told me. That Pioli Road was twenty foot wide, which was ten foot from the center either direction.
That'd be the same as Mount Laurel then. Road I happen to live on, that that road is twenty feet at its max.
I see, they're saying assumed road bounds sixteen feet five, yeah. I mean, I guess it would be a question for the. I think there there's no paper on any of this, which is what the code says how to calculate it, cause it's all informal.
Which, yeah, which. That came from the office right here.
That's the twenty, yeah, yeah. Okay. I had a few other questions besides, okay.
Please, yeah.
So what's the um, what's the reason why the, why the pole barn needs to go here as opposed to? Further back on, cause this is your part, your boundary, your property line right here, right?
Yeah.
So why couldn't it go?
So it can't go here because of the septic.
Uh-huh, um the se- that's, is that the tank or is that the?
Septic is. Septic is fourteen feet from from this edge. Not, yeah, my, uh the. Fourteen feet and then it's fourteen feet from. From this line over here, so it puts it right in here, so it's saying it can't only move it over.
Off the off of the house.
And go fourteen feet this way and fourteen feet from the proposed line this way. And that gives you, that's where the tank is.
Fourteen, okay, and where's the leach field?
It's accessible.
Okay.
But if I ever have to. Put in a leach field, it's gonna have to also go here.
That way.
Um.
So that's your secondary leach field area.
It will be if I have a bit, yes. Um, there's a pond here, so nothing.
Okay, I thought it was showing on the survey, yeah.
And this is all all wet. Pretty much thi- this is the highest spot of the property, it's where the driveway is. Um, I'm not gonna get my variance over here, um and uh. Like I said, there's a there's a pond here and this is all that that's gonna be my leach fields someday, should it, I ever have to. And I can't ship this over because the tank is there.
And I know Google Maps isn't the beyond all, but it looks like there's something right here.
There's a carport which is also on my other maps. And I.
So that's why I can't go there. Would would require a side yard variance.
Now, when you say it's wet, you're referring to it just, it stays wet, it's not a stream running through there.
No.
It's not wetlands.
Um, it's not wetland off of my property, then it gets swampy. Um, I can mow it, but it's like, I can't drive back there, if it rains, I can't drive the tractor back there. Um, if I was gonna put it back there, it would require substantial. Build plus extend in the driveway more, you know, it would be uh and it's gonna be in the. You know, in the back right next to that pond, it's just, even if it wasn't wet, it wouldn't be ideal, but it's uh. Definitely not.
It's not an option.
Yeah.
Um, what's the height of the building gonna be?
You know what? That's a good question. The inside is gonna be. Uh twelve twelve foot four inch ceiling um. I didn't get the specs yet from. Pioneer, because I have purchased it yet. Um, and then we're gonna send me some uh uh general. Something and they never did, I can get that though, I'm sure, but um I do have, you can get online. A picture that's uh very similar to the one that I am gonna hopefully put up, minus the lean to. Right, other than this one is a. The uh twenty four by thirty two, I plan on doing a the thirty by thirty two. But uh. Everybody wants to see what it's gonna look like.
So. This picture then, it looks like the it would be the one of the barn. Is the fifty foot from the side setback. And then via Pioli, one section based on the center of the road measurement, if we were to use that. Is at fifty feet and the back corner would be at forty three.
So that would actually be the front corner is forty three.
Okay.
And then the back would be fifty, because the road's on an angle.
Gotcha, okay, I wasn't sure which which evidence you were using.
Yeah, that the you can kind of see that dotted line is kind of the driveway.
Okay.
And uh the front of the house.
There any other, any utilities or anything that are going in there?
Not at the moment, um, right now we uh. Set up for for storage, a little work area, um, the lane to I'll put my tractor implements. In there.
Have you considered going a little smaller?
Originally, I did, um, and like. Everything else that. You ever do, you never have enough space. Um, and they.
Three hundred by three hundred. Girl, I just still have enough space.
Correct, and uh um, yeah, so uh and the the size also uh um. For that extra size, it's very little extra cost, so they actually recommended it, Pioneer did to me. To to go the bigger size.
You do re- reach that magic price point, but once again, it's not something we can really consider issuing a variance is cost.
Okay.
But. While I agree with you a hundred percent.
It's still not gonna get me my variance, though, if I go smaller, it's still not gonna get.
Right, right, it's it's still not gonna accomplish what you you were after. Um, it's gonna be all metal.
Yes.
And. Wh- what colors are you looking at?
I'm looking at similar to what's on the picture here, which is a like a tan, tanish, brownish.
Not purple or?
No, definitely not.
I know it sounds funny, but you you never know, and then you end up really. Creating a problem for the neighbors and.
I already have letters from all the neighbors, it's a dead end road, um, and uh.
Yeah, when I add those in.
Nobody that's on that road that's. Wouldn't care, they probably wouldn't care, but they wouldn't say anything, it was pink, but um. Yeah, we 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 all get along well, none of us are gonna do anything to aggravate. Any of the rest of them who are who are like neighborhoods.
Yeah, if if when this goes to a public hearing, I'll bring that this up again, but we do have several letters of support. Um, I don't, there's none here that. Are against it. Um, any other questions from anybody? We do, Sam, we do have to figure out how we're gonna calculate the setbacks, so we can get our percentage too. If we go based on the center of the road and based on the seventeen feet, it'd be thirty four percent.
Yeah, I think they should just do. The.
You know, they need variance on the one corner of the garage to back, so it's.
Well, no, it's fifty, it's fifty feet if we go with the the center.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that we have to just follow what.
The CEO is determined or.
Know what the codes, I mean, the code says clearly, if it's a town road, it's twenty five feet from the center line. So we start twenty five feet from the center line, and that's where we count from. I mean, I don't, it doesn't really change anything in how I think about it, I just.
Right, no, I understand, it it but it's important, it's important that we we. For record that we have the proper percentage calculation, seems to be a hang up that we have on a lot of variances. With regards to how are we taking measurements? Are we ma- measuring from this point, this point, or this point? With this one, I I kind of have to agree, we have to go, because there is no predetermined. Distance for Via Pioli Road of ten feet from the center line, even if we calculate it from twenty five feet. It leaves us with, what, a twenty three foot, did you say?
Yep.
Or twenty two.
No, eighteen, eighteen out of fifty, it's it's a.
It's eighteen, it's eighteen out of fifty.
In that corner, and then the other corner, it would be twenty five out of fifteen.
Alright, so it'd be fifty percent, yeah, that's, I I would always calculate it to the mag- the the furthest distance, which would be the twenty five feet. So we're looking for a fifty percent.
Twenty five feet. On a twenty foot road? That, I mean, I don't, I can't, I I think what. Just my understanding from seeing how the the code was changed from the previous version to the current version. Is before there was no explanation of how to calculate it. And now they said this is how to calculate.
Right, they have to have.
They have to have a standard.
Have to have something to go by.
But before it caused all kinds of. Confusion, because there was no.
And and then you take, and it also confuses people when you're going from a corner lot.
And the stamp.
It creates a huge problem.
And the standard right of way for a road is fifty feet, so it makes it like the town needs to have the right to maintain. Right, or if there's utility poles or any of that stuff, it's just the standards fifty feet. So that's why it's.
Which one, they don't have a lot of the town roads, they don't have.
Yeah, it's not there, but if there ever needed to be an expansion of the road, if the town wanted to build sidewalks, and all these things that they could do.
Lot of town roads are uh between thirty and thirty five feet, the majority.
Of how wide they are of the pavement.
The, yeah, yeah, county roads are fifty foot and state roads are getting up to a hundred foot.
Right, that so is my, my reading of it is that it's written really with the expectation that. That's close, that's closer to what Holly's describing is a larger road, but I understand what you're saying, Sam. Again, this is, this is academic in some ways.
Them to get to those clearances and the the width that. We're talking about on that road is going to be impossible in several spots. Because of where the houses are located.
The degree growth coming in, it's not like.
I can speak from my home where I live, it would be physically impossible for them to widen that road for the first six hundred feet of that road. Can't happen.
Okay. Okay, and I was just looking if there was anything in the. Uh, if you have a nonconforming law of record with this is. Because it's just too small for the R five, like if there was any special stuff somewhere else in the code, and it just says that you can't. Make it not meet the other accessory structure requirements. Um, which were, that's not.
This is another unique situation where he's zoned in R five.
I I don't know why, if you look at the map, it's like.
R two, R two, R two, but I understand when they do these, they have to stop.
Somewhere.
Right, it has to stop somewhere and it just.
But it is weird, I mean, there are, they just redo it and there were some. Errors and I I don't want to um.
I mean, i- if this were.
Can't give you advice.
My my poor neighbor. She can't, she she there's, she couldn't build anything on hers, because she's a strip, she can't get.
She would get tight that back.
Yeah, she couldn't.
That's one reason why we have these zoning boards of appeals and the other processes to accommodate.
I know I.
Have anomalies like that.
I'm reading Sam's mind, he could have three zones.
Setback.
Yeah, still need a variance.
It's still need a variance.
You could consider going to the town board at some point and saying, hey, look. You've got me in R five, but my neighbor's in R two and my lot's only one point eight, and I think it would make more sense if I was in R two.
They were gonna do that. And uh and to be when I first brought it in. Um, and then they saw that it was me and uh Mary Breaks' property. Um, and then they would think, and the other thing was the time, it's like.
Oh, for this, you mean?
For this, yeah.
Some point, you know, if it just might make your life easier in the future.
Yeah.
You would still need a variance, because that still says thirty five, it's still a thirty five setback.
Right. So when I, but I could, if it was thirty five, I could move the the garage. Twelve feet. Back, and then I would get all of my variance for thirty five. I so I could get it if it was thirty five.
Something for you to think.
So.
But you can't, based on what you told us, you can't move the building.
Well, I can't move it towards a house.
Right.
I can't move it towards a road, I can move it down towards the end of Pioli Road.
Oh, I got you, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect.
Because road goes like this, so I'd be, the more I move it back, the further away from the road it gets.
Yeah.
And so. If I.
Thirty five feet on side.
But I can't do that now and get my fifty, because I then I'm losing my fifty variance on this side. So, but thirty five, I might be able to, if they didn't make me an R five.
You know what this distance is?
That's fifty feet.
Right now, so if it moved, you need thirty five, so if this moved fifteen feet. Right, yeah. I mean, if we're thinking about. It would make it a smaller variance.
But yeah, I think if he's under a time constraint.
That's the problem.
He's gonna end up having to fight this battle with making the R two change.
Right, right, I hear you. Would would.
Yeah, I would definitely change it, even. If you don't get this variance, or you do get this variance, I would still seek the change to R two.
Yeah.
Just 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 to be clear, so. Is there an advantage to you? In being an R two such that. Moving the location of the garage would be a good thing for you, putting aside all the legalities. Is there an advantage? I'm just, I mean, it's your decision, but I, this is what I'm trying to.
I'm not opposed, if I had to move that further. Towards the end of Pioli Road, I'm not opposed to doing that one way or the other.
But you're not opposed to it, no, I I mean, I understand you're not opposed to it, I'm just trying to. Understand, is it a desire or is it just an alternative? Because we can deal with this in the variance application that you put in front of them.
It's it's a little bit of both, um, if uh. Yeah, it's it's um. Whatever's gonna help my cause.
It's worth, I'd be curious, I mean, maybe we can just do it right now. If we.
We have other maps.
Yeah, if you were to move the, well, we can just do it like this, right? If you were to shift the whole thing. Fifteen feet, do you know what cardinal direction that is?
That is. I've got kind of. I'm thinking north, but it's probably north.
But if you moved it fifteen feet that way. Right, this is thirty feet, so your corner of the building would be here, right? Which would mean, assuming this is an even slope instead of forty three.
Twenty feet, not twenty five.
Right, right, so you you gain, this is a change of seven feet, they'll put you three and a half feet further from. Uh huh, so this would be like forty six.
I did twelve or fourteen feet would get, would get me the thirty five.
I think ultimately the percentage of the variance is gonna be about the same, because then it would require two. It would require the side yard.
Right, yeah.
Setback.
Yeah. But it's good to consider it, like if we could bury just the side yard and not have to vary the front yard.
And I think you you developed this plan based on that back setback of fifty feet, knowing you needed that, so you set that as your solid setback. And then put the building as far back from the road as you can, that's what I'm gaining from that, I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
No, that's.
Yeah, I think I'd be curious to know, I mean, maybe you just have to go back and measure this, but like. How far to the north you would have to move it? If it's even possible to get. The fifty feet in the front yard, or to get thirty five feet, assuming you were in R two.
And and again, it's it's, I'm not gonna have my, I I either. Have it here and not here, or here and not here, I can't get both.
Right, because that's the five, because if it's twenty five feet from the center plus thirty five, assuming we just like. Thought of it per. The sake of intellectual exercise, if it were an R two.
R two, yeah.
You would need sixty feet to the center line, is there such a place where you could be both thirty five feet from here? And sixty feet from the center line, does that exist? It looks like it doesn't, but it's hard to tell.
I I. I think you're gonna end up with the same percentage instead of having the.
Yeah.
The the fifty percent to twenty five foot setback, right now you might have. Uh, the need for a twenty foot setback, but now you need a five foot setback here.
Yeah, I'm not, I've the, no way I'm gonna get the sixty.
Yeah, okay.
Unless I lose everything on on.
Right, unless you made it all the way basically to zero, yeah.
Okay.
Would you be able to move it, say, ten feet towards your well?
No, I I'm I'm afraid to move it any closer to the the tank, septic tank.
Or the septic takes in there by your well?
Oh, by the by the well, on the other side of the house.
Yeah, where you have it now.
Oh, that's an ornamental well, so, um, no, I can't move it any further. Towards the house, Charlie, because of the because of the septic.
Yeah.
Um, and. I'd have to put it all the way on the other. Um, side of the septic, which will be in my more than likely if I wrap a foot of. A leach field in, plus then I'm gonna lose my variance to to the property line in the back here.
The driveway going to the houses, up straight in that gravel. Warfarin there, right?
Yeah, it comes in, comes into the gravel, and then it goes down to to the corner of the garage here.
Yes, I remember, they used to go straight up for the house.
Yeah. Here and fill the tank.
The front yard, are there any trees or anything that run along Via Pioli?
Um, not where the garage is.
Okay, so that's all cleared land.
That's all cleared.
Alright, so I think we need to consider though. What do you think, Sam? We're gonna go with the twenty five?
I think that's just what we have to do, yeah.
Based on. The applicant.
Yeah, based, I mean, just based on what the. Code says.
Yeah. Because we're gonna go based on R five, we we.
Yeah, we have to go based on R five.
So.
And we have to go based on. And separate, you might ask.
I would absolutely.
Because it might help with something in the future.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't.
It doesn't have any impact on this at that point.
So yeah, I was like, maybe the front yard setback would be ten feet or something.
I agree, I agree, because it's not.
We have that once on Sampsonville Road.
Yes, we did, it's it's happened a couple times.
Yeah.
Um. In this instance, you're 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 shifting the the distances, the the same.
Right.
Ultimately.
Right.
Any other questions? Harley, got anything but? Charlie, how about you, man?
I answered all mine.
Just email us a a copy of the map that shows the location of the septic. And like where you would need to put a leach field in the future. Just drawn on a map, that's helpful because one of the things we have to look at is. Are there other options that would allow?
Here's the one you gave us before.
So I think that's that's already there.
Yeah, you could just draw on where you're like.
Secondary reserve zone. Oh, it's, I've I've heard it before.
When you get a permit, you have to have the place for the lead field and then you need a reserve area. In case your leach field fails, they can put in a.
Okay, well, I'd probably have to put an above-ground septic and it would probably have to go. You know, right in here.
So it was right like reserve septic area. Your cesspool with a new one.
Unless you're selling yourself, you wouldn't.
So that they'll allow that. I have no problem with it.
Not as far as I know, I guess. I haven't taken yet, but you can call if you revise.
Got anything else you can provide us with?
Um, I can provide you whatever, whatever you ask for, um. And uh, I think that's pretty straightforward what I have though. Um, obviously, any questions, feel free to.
Now, the material looks good. We appreciate you giving us much as you did. I just wanna make a note too that. He should have been, I know we had to revise the agenda for tonight and he was added to the agenda. That was not anything on the applicant's part that had to do with the. Application coming in and being misfiled temporarily. So they were able to scramble it and we still got it in with the time constraints for public hearing.
Which I appreciate.
So, but it wasn't any, it wasn't an error other than the mistake. It wasn't done. For any other reason.
Thanks, Adam.
Yes, so I think if we're comfortable, once again, maybe we could set this for a public hearing. For the eighteenth of next month. Um, if I can motion for that.
I'll move that we schedule this for a public hearing on September eighteenth.
I give a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained, motion carries. Alright, you'll have a public hearing scheduled for the fifteenth of next month. Once again, if you copy of this, what we're kind of doing and how this whole thing works. Straightforward public hearing, public come out, they're opposed, they'll say something if they're for it, that's free. And um, barring any other unperceivable. Uh, questions that we might have. Uh, we might be able to get your application approved or refusing on that deal.
Beautiful. So as soon as I can order this thing for that. Snow flies.
Not just that, for the prices. That's outside of mine, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate it. Um, I already have. Any of the neighbors that are. Around me are gonna go find me. You already have letters for.
I I looked at the letters and I matched them up to the properties that surround him and there's not one person. That surrounds that property that wasn't able to provide positive note for this. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will see you next month. Alright, last thing to add is minutes for last month.
No.
No?
I said, yeah.
Well, here, well, give me.
Sounded like you said, no, I.
I think under his breath, he said, no. Um, all it was was just approving the minutes, so now we're approving the minutes from approving the minutes.
Yeah, I'll prove them. I I make a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Got a second on that? We got a third.
What was the date of those?
Uh, these were July seventeenth. Alright, so there's a motion to approve the minutes from July seventeenth, Town of Rochester's zoning board of appeals. Any discussion on? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Anybody else got anything?
Uh, just a quick question. For registering for any of these trainings that are live and require a fee. How are we handling? My past, I've done it both ways.
If if they require a fee. That's unusual.
Usually the town pays it. Been reimbursed. Or or or, um, it's been smoothed over so that they handle it. Either through the supervisor's office or so.
What I would do is if you have enough time before the training, I would submit a. Pay bill request to be covered for the training and that way you can go in front of the. The town board if necessary. I think there's a certain amount that's allotted for training. So then just come out of that and so you don't end up paying out of pocket. Worst case scenario, I don't know how much it is. But chances are you're gonna be reimbursed.
Yeah, some of them were like eighty dollars. It wasn't like nothing.
I'm gonna tell you, I I just completed four hours of training with that link that you gave to sign up for different courses. That is, that's awesome because you can go on when you have time. And and take care of these things, so. Appreciate you sending that out. Helpful. Um, other than that, yeah, just keep up on your training. Make sure you get the four hours. We're over halfway through the year. Like I I told everybody before the meeting, we have this. Guidelines, sort of. Things that are to be considered by the ZVA. That I think is really helpful and Stacy was able to send this, put it in email to the applicants. And I think going forward, it's a wise idea. I think it's really good to add in there, um, if anything we can do to help them prepare for the meeting helps us. So.
My stuff has to come P F D because the docs does not work for me.
I figured it out. I've been sending in as both now.
Each way. Are you able to see him though? One of those you should be able to see.
Well, there was one, I couldn't say.
Was that the first one?
It was come up docs and the application, I think it was P F D.
There's ever anything, just let me know and I can resend it, because I usually have both.
But I think it's important that information get to us as quickly as possible. That way we can look at everything. We find things like Sam brought up, I mean. The center of the road issue, that's that's a big problem. Alright, well, um, anything else? Got anything?
Go ahead, get something, sorry. I don't know who wrote this, but we should have something in here about appeals versus variances, because it could be slightly different.
It's on the front.
Yes, it there is, but um, the way it's laid out. I mean, I I appreciate that somebody.
Timeline or the process.
Yeah, oh, because um. It's really on an appeal where you're considering was the CEO's decision correct under zoning law. I mean, sometimes we do that in the course of a variance in which we're kind of like almost converting it to an appeal. And granting it.
Maybe it's worth looking into creating a separate one for. That way, you know, because it'll, the the applicant will know what they're after when they fill out the application for the appeal and that. Correct one can be forwarded to them.
Yes, or we could have it in one, we could have it in one document. Maybe I'll write something up, you you can all review it.
Yeah, I like the idea. Anything we can do to streamline the process for the applicants, man, I'm all in favor of that. Any information we can glean from their application helps us. Well, nobody has anything else. And I can a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Harley's gonna second. Adjourned, no? Okay, all in favor? Hi, any opposed that wanna stay and chat more? Oh, any abstaining? None, motion carries.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I don't, you know.